Before we reach order, and by the most that Stephanie, the next evening's staff said this evening, and we will start with the board of allegiance.
United States of America, and in the year of our religious saints, one nation, under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
The children of the world who bring together students, parents, staff, community, provide quality education, and emphasis on development is a whole potential.
At this time, we have an opportunity, an open forum for citizens, and we will go on to our actual approval of the agenda for today's committee motion, and second please.
Motion to approve?
A motion by Patrick, seconded by Nathan, to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We have the approval of routine business items, which includes the consent agenda, our board goals, and the approval of meeting minutes. I would need a motion and second please.
Motion to approve?
A motion is made by Nathan, seconded by Wayne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I would just draw attention to two retirement serves, Susan Sussman and Joan Brown. So, the board does acknowledge that any retirees who are dedicated to service to our students. We have a resolution for accepting gifts. And I'll just kind of say, the first ones that I'm going to read off are the designated purposes for the Holy Community Connect School, which will be held on March 23rd from 8:00 until 1:00. So, Compuer Financial, $100 donation, ALBF Inc., Auto Video Drinks, $250, Robert Pullman, $250, First National Bank of Alabada, $250, Holy Chamber of Commerce, $500, Trans and Bank of Trust, $100, Inax Manufacturing, $100, Uncross Blue Shield of Minnesota, $500, ECare, $250, Dewey Street Dental, $250, Medica, $500, and Terroco, $500. We also have donations from Virg, $200 towards beverages for the sixth grade, I love to read, challenge celebration. Maywood Covenant Church has donated $500, it's valued in Missalene's items for our students at Holy Community Schools, Miss Davis Church, $350, and that is designated to Holy Community by Club. And the district certainly appreciates all of the financial help that we've received on these donations, and I would need a motion and a second to accept the motion. Sir. Motion by Ken, seconded by Sharon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's okay. We just have the board meeting, or training, that we can do resolutions, resolutions are open, no complaints, option.
Thank you for your time.
So, the ayes, the resolution passes unanimously for donations. We have a budget and enrollment report, and we have Erin Nasca here from SMS, our director of finance.
If you look at the March column, you can see our enrollment is actually remaining, it's continuing to remain steady. It looks like we gained a few in the elementary. We gained one student in the intermediate school, and we did lose three in the high school, but overall, our enrollment is remaining stable.
We have the administrative information and reports, and I know our adminants have given us written report, and I'll just ask if there's anything additional, and then what was in your written report, which is in our packet. So, Alyssa Stewart? Eric English? Karen Kunder? Eric Fuhrman? Joel Fox?
I'd like to echo the sentiments for the retirees.
Sure, oh, I'm sorry. The budget report looks a little different than it had in the past. I am working on a new budget report that was delivered to Jared in the past. I just did not have time to get that.
Sarah, for the board meeting?
But I just wanted to show how, currently this year, we have spent $13.6 million in the general fund, $971,000 in food service, community services is about $630,000. Debt redemptions, paying our debt, we can pay it in this one, I thought this is year to date payment. Currently, year to date, all of our funds included, we've spent $16.9 million, and we have received in revenue currently, $13.4 million, leaving us with, oh, I'm sorry you guys, I'm reading last next year, I was down too far. So, last year, we spent $16.9 million at this time, received $13.4 million, leaving us deficit spending $3.4 million in February of last year. This year, we've spent $18.5 million, and we've only received $16.1 million in revenue, having, showing a deficit of $2.4 million from that from the beginning of the school year, February.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for here, for our projects, or moving on before the current report? We go on then to the superintendent evaluation. So, on March 4th, with NSBA, Minnesota School Board Association, as guideline, we had a mid-year or six to seven month, just a dialogue, a check-in with our superintendent, Dr. Teresa Perry. At that time, she did provide us with her goals, and these goals were set, I believe, with the previous board chair, and they included budget work, climate, and instruction. And so, just to highlight some of the things that we talked about and touched on that night, so regarding budget, which was a priority goal. It was to work within the budgetary guidelines, is set forth by the school board, and it is, it is our goal to maintain a balanced budget. It was at that time, within the first six, seven months of employment, it was determined that the bus contract that we had was troll, which was not physically financially stable and investment interest of the district, and that was taken, terminated. It was also recommended a shift to SMS based on quality conditions and needs of the district, and this is regarding our director of finance. District also faced a resignation and funeral, and we worked the staff and recommended using SMS as cost savings to the district as well. All Esser funds were drawn from our account, and Esser was our COVID money, and we used all of our Esser funds at this time, I believe, and part of that was used for activity bus, which was, I guess, also on activity bus. And when the Esser funds were used, it's not sustainable to continue that service, that was discontinued earlier in the school year. Also, invitations on school finance were presented to our staff. The second goal was climate in our district, and the goal is to foster a positive work environment, promote open communication and transparency. And beginning in July with her appointment, she met with a number of stakeholders and reported findings to the school board. And it's also, we have a goal to improve and provide efficient information, is sending a monthly lease letter to staff with important information, and also a monthly lease letter to our parents. A goal for instruction was to support implement research-based initiatives that will be bringing an academic achievement. And some of the highlights that we touched on that goal was an updated curriculum review process, a curriculum meeting was formed, and making a spoken sequence of priorities as we're doing that category. So, this is this discussion, kind of a reiteration, since we had a closed meeting, and going through, we both discussed that. It was a six or seven month, just a talking, kind of a informal review. Dr. Perry, do you want to add to that?
Madam Chair, yes? For our public, we have a set of board norms that we drew up 18 months ago, and part of that was scheduling reviews and goals with superintendent. So, what we just described, what was just described by our chair, is our check-in point with another yearly or annual review goal setting that will occur in several months. The idea is that that's the main review, that we have a check-in, kind of six months or so in. So, that is part of our board norms, and working with Dr. Perry then to get on that schedule.
Thank you, Patrick. We have, we have had numerous board committee meetings, and at this point, we'll have recording of those. I guess I'll start. We had a Holy Area Community Foundation meeting, we met on March 13th. Topic of discussion was fundraising, and the plan is to hold a political tournament on Tuesday of Holy Fund Days, with proceeds of that going to Holy Area Community Foundation and the scholarships given to our seniors. Holy Athletic Booster Club also met, Sharon, you want to talk on that one?
The last Holy Athletic Boosters was, meeting was March 6th in the FHS Media Center. Discuss was the Night of Excellence, Hall of Fame, raffle tickets, and the 5K. The next meeting will be called when you go.
We also had a health and safety meeting.
I was present. We just discussed work with complaints, and just some other facility projects as well. Court member of these cases serves on that as well.
And also the lawless committee there, who's on your side?
She also serves on that committee, and unfortunately, I was not present, so I can't provide an update of the R B and the end.
Thank you. And we also had a finance committee meeting, which we met on March 11th, and we went through with our budget presentation and had in-depth conversation regarding our budget and our current financial situation. So, there's been a lot of labor done regarding our budget. Next, we do have on the agenda, the resolution, which is continuing and reducing educational programs and positions, and we're going to press that with some information.
Madam Chair, maybe go back, because I also want to share a budget timeline. And we've come to that document, and we understand the process of what also occurs. And our finance meeting is yearly, and many times monthly, but I just went back as far as December, and members of the board, and also present with a document, we have three members that are part of the committee. And our first meeting, going back in December again, we had previous meetings before this. We reviewed our budget, and we also reviewed our five-year preliminary plan, so planning into the future. And January 22nd, we did have a formal audit. Each year, the district is required to have an audit, and that audit was approved at that particular board meeting, and that gives us guidelines on the financial, the financial story of the district. And one thing that we learned is that we're seeing a decline in our unrestricted fund balance, and that's something that we really have to watch, because typically, the board sets their policy, at how much of your general fund you want to make sure that you have as a fund balance. And in our policy, the board has set 12%. So, currently, our fund balance is at 13.1%, and we're deficit spending, as we heard from Ms. Nasca. On January 24th, at the time, our finance committee met, and they directed administration to look at $1.2 million worth of cost containment, so right sizing our budget.
Why was 1.2 million, you explained that in?
Again, a quick glance at our budget shows a few different, few different things. One is that our funding has not kept up with inflation, and it's interesting when you, when you look, and this is part of our audit, what we receive in funding is a little over $7,000, and there's a gap in what it actually costs to educate a student is over $8,000. The one thing that you may also hear in the legislation, that there's been historic funding. What does that mean, historic funding? And I'm going to explain that a little bit more, but typically, what we've seen is we've seen a 2% increase on the general fund. That again, is not enough money to cover what the expenses are to educate kids, not only in Holy, but across the state of Minnesota as well. Now, when we talk about a 4% to 2% increase, what does that look like here for us in Holy? And the next point that I'd like to bring up about the reason for the 1.2 million is we've seen a decline in our enrollment. As Ms. Nasca had shared, that we do, our enrollment is steady, we have lost students. We lost students over COVID, and we didn't make those adjustments during that time. So, if you think, just to do an easy number, if we lose 30 students, each student is a little over $7,000, but to keep it easy, that's $210,000 that we need to adjust, and then adjust it. Now, our, our funding is based on our enrollment. So, when we talk about the historic amount of funding from our last year fiscal year to this year, we've received an additional $160,000 in funding. And that had to cover all of our staffing increases and any additional costs that we may experience. I don't know about you, but I know my own home expenses have increased. My groceries have increased, insurance has increased, eating bill has increased, and that's the same in a school district. We also receive funding for special education. Special education is a federally mandated program. However, we don't receive, it's not fully funded. So, you may have heard a term called cost subsidy, and an increase in, in the cost subsidy, which is true, we did receive additional funds. However, those funds do not cover the costs of what our special education program costs our school district. We also saw a reduction in federal funds. Our chair had mentioned Esser funds during COVID. We received approximately $2.7 million in COVID relief funds. About $888,000 or so was used to help support our staff costs. We don't receive that funding anymore. And then, finally, we don't have an operating levy either. So, those are the reasons that are attributed to $1.2 billion. Now, here are options. If we don't do something now, this problem isn't going to go away, and I understand that there is going to be housing development in Holy, and I'm excited for that to happen. But that's not going to happen next year. That may not happen the year after. And if we don't act now, the board does not include something, we will see our unrestricted fund balance that will go away. So, remember what I told you, it's a little over $3 million. So, subtract 1.2 million. Subtract another 1.2 million, that happens again next year, fiscal year '26, we're talking about fiscal year '25, for $1.2 million. We won't have a fund balance anymore. So, what does that mean? That means that we go into statutory operating debt. We don't want to do that. That's why we're here tonight, to make the really tough decisions. And what that means, if we go into SOB, is that the state comes in, they tell us how to spend our money, how to educate our kids, and that's not something that we want to happen. So, that's why we're at the point that we're at right now. On January 29th, there was a budget presentation to all the billions, and we called that School Finance 101. And the one thing that if you read our Google parent newsletter, will be presenting that same presentation to the community, so that we can educate about how complicated school finance is. The one thing that I do want to share is that tonight, we're talking about our certified staff, and that's not where our reductions end, unfortunately. And what's important to remember, and that we realize, behind every one of these line items, there's a human story that goes with that money item. And I can tell you from experience, that I have been on that end as a young teacher, as a formationary teacher, and it's not easy, very hard. So, you know what this is like, you know what it feels like on the other end, as well as it feels like on this end. So, I invite you to make sure that you watch, and that you come back, and you listen, and you learn about school finance in Minnesota. Because what you'll see is, even though we have right sizing of our staff, other things still have to happen here. So, you'll see projects happen in the building, you'll see maintenance, because those are our capital funds, and we have to use those funds, they're restricted. So, restricted funds are for specific purposes. You can't use those funds to help support our staff, and that's pretty difficult, when there's so many restrictions and mandates on how we use our dollars. On March 11th, as our chair, Howard, had mentioned, another finance committee was held, and during this committee, we reviewed our administrative team, review in depth the budget cost containment. And there's reasons why in the resolution that you don't put numbers, because there's a lot of different moving pieces on staff salaries. We have to work through stranding, and we have to work to make sure that we are reducing the correct positions. So, you won't see a number on the reduction, on the resolution tonight. On March 13th, the administrative team did meet with certified staff whose position may be impacted by the resolution, and the one thing you'll notice tonight, that this is worst-case scenario. And the reason why we do this tonight, is because there's statutory obligations that we have to follow by law, to inform people. And then, also, if there's any, what we would call a tenured teacher, they have rights to hearings, so we have to make sure that we follow the time on that set by law. On April 8th, the school board will hear another resolution looking at non-renewing or probationary teachers, that's again, so that gives enough time for those that may be impacted to find, to change unemployment. But there's also a chance, because one thing that we learn in School Finance 101, is that enrollment can vary. So, things can happen during the summer, and if we gain extra enrollment, we call teachers back. That's something that is very normal that happens. In mid-April, we also have to, remember, we're only looking at our certified staff, there's other cost saving measures that will happen, and we will be working through our directors, and again, we have different union contracts, and those contracts have to be reviewed to make sure that we're following our requirements set forth in layout notices and those contracts. And then, again, in mid to late April, you'll hear, you'll see the public, we are scheduling meetings, so we will invite people to come in, so that they can learn more in detail about school finance, as well as how this is operating, and the impact that these reductions will have. I will be very transparent, will the reductions, will they hurt? Absolutely, it will hurt. It will cause us to do things differently than what we normally would, would do, and that we like to do. And I can tell you that we're not the only school district that is facing this. So, the one recommendation that I can give to you, because I appreciate you coming here and sharing your feelings, is to contact our local legislatures and tell them what this means to us here. Because historic funding is naturally disloyal.
And I have one more question. You mentioned that operating referendums, can you explain what that is, and as we don't have one, can you talk about that?
Sure. And operating levy, that is something that is board, board approved, and that would provide additional money to the school districts. And our community, what the per pupil average is in the state of Minnesota, they're $300 less. So, what we're doing here, other schools are getting $300 more than we are. And so, there's two different ways to look at a referendum. One is for, one's a levy, levy is for learning. The second is bonds, bonds are for buildings. So, imagine what we could do, if we have those additional funds. So, think about, even if it was to the state average, $300, multiply that, I can't do the math fast, enough 1,800, a little over 1,800 students, times $300. That would be additional funds that would come into the school each year for a certain amount of time, for like, it could be 10 years, it could be 5 years. But I want to be very honest, to tell you that school district, we are not wasting this money. We understand how hard it is for you to work for $300, and we take that into consideration, and we're spending that money, because our top priority is educating and old residents in holy Catholic schools. Any additional questions?
I just wanted to add something. When you speak about unrestricted fund balance, just for purpose of explaining that, in essence, that's, that's our school's savings account. And so, as Dr. Perry said, we actually have almost, I would say, we have seven checkbooks that you wear, because we have seven different funds, and we have one, food service is one, but restricted is one. You know, we have seven different checkbooks that we have to try to maneuver with our spending, and the unrestricted fund balance is actually the savings account, if you will. And I don't know how many of you like to spend down your savings accounts at your individual homes. I mean, if you have emergencies, that's what it's for, and the school district is, is no different, we have emergencies as well. So, I just wanted to reiterate what I, unrestricted fund balance. And as Dr. Perry alluded, we have neighboring districts, I think it's Princeton cutting 3 million? Over 3 million, there's such a, such a. I read it straight for Princeton. Thank you for the timeline, and how you drew up a good timeline. Thank you for the timeline and how you threw up a good timeline. We do have a resolution as stated, we're just continuing and reducing educational programs and positions.
And I'm sure I have one more point to the resolution. Because I know that we have in our audience, because they're concerned about the proville academic support. And I believe Father Joseph had mentioned the dollar amount, so with our shared time, we received $49,962.64 of shared time. And we also do receive funding from the state for transportation. But again, the funding that we received does not cover the costs. As Father Joseph had said, that our cost, that it's costing us public school is $75,000, $139,000, $74,000. And the one thing that I have heard time to time again is that St. John's Kids are on this too. They're going to be part of the public school. And the one thing that's clear is that there is the history. And we can't continue to do the way that we're doing it now because we can't afford $75,000. But what I'd like to offer and what I'd like to suggest is that if we are to continue the relationship with St. John's, we just have to look a little bit different. We can't send instructors to St. John's. However, St. John's kids can come into our system to take classes and know what that look like. We'd have to develop a policy, we don't have a policy in place right now. We'd have to set some parameters about what that would be. But there is, there is a chance that we will work. So we're not closing the door, but we definitely have to, as I said, do some things differently. We just simply can't afford the $75,000. And I want to remind members of the board that if we don't get things differently, then something else has to come from this. It's really important that the judiciary is of the school district to count as your whole institution.
Dr. Perry, could you expound it all on the legal issue that Father mentioned before too? Just in case anyone's not aware.
Sure. The legal issue dates back to 1944. And there was an attorney general opinion and it doesn't provide much guidance. And the guidance is discretionary, so it really is to the public school. But at the same time, we cannot discriminate against students either. And so again, we want to honor the relationship that we have with St. John's, but it will have to look different.
And that is also due to the legal issue that we have to make sure is followed.
So are you saying that we're going to remove the proville academic support from this reservation?
So there might be some, you're working on a way to bring something else that is not, it's not going to be the exact same, but it's not going to be nothing. That's what we're, what you're working on, trying to find a way.
My recommendation would be that this is a cop statement, so we can't afford the $75,000 to send our staff there. However, we can be able to work out that the kids can come onto this campus. But again, the recommendation would be that we, as a board, the board does need to develop a policy that what that would look like, specifically setting parameters around class sizes and so on, and our space issues here on this and this.
And just for people in the public who are curious about our policy process, we do have a policy committee that thinks, beat through and then come up to the board and go through. There's a whole process for this.
Correct.
Would you like to say that it would make sense for their administration, our administration to work on policy share time? Would that be the next step, bring some issue for what's on?
And in our schedule, I don't work on the scheduling as much, but we do have to do a deeper dive into the schedule to see what the board for St. John's has got. There's a lot of the need pieces and again, the parameters. Those are things that the board and our staff within the policy, we currently do not have a shared time policy.
So not develop a relationship with John's. We're just basically saying the process. When we're looking from a board standpoint, we're looking at this situation. I know we have a lot of our teachers in here, a lot of our students are affected. Doesn't make sense to me to cut additionally inside of here or both of them.
Right. And as you said, and it's an alternative, we're looking at alternatives. We're looking at work around, if you will. It's just not sustainable to our budget to take $75,000, get year after year after year. It's not sustainable for us.
I am heartbroken, I want to say thank you for, I know you've been tracking your brain for quite a while trying to figure out some way to still work with St. John's. You know, I thought you'd be fortunate about this. You can work at so many angles, I can say. Thank you. I know that's not something everyone gets to see that part. So I also want to thank you for trying to explain that this time.
Well, I think it would have made a lot more sense, we're telling them now, we're going to discuss with them. The same thing with our own staff. It would have made a lot of sense to ask for comments and ideas and have the dialogue and board so we know what the options are instead of this hindsight. It's not a good antelope.
Sharon, I will say that we did, both as NASA and I presented twice to the staff. And we did ask and seek staff opinion and invited any ideas that they have to email. And I also now have different real communities and discussions I have as well.
And that discussion is...
There's a preneed to discussions with Mr. President, I think. And then getting back to our legal findings here that we found out a little bit more about shared time. Our attorneys, whether working overtime, I'm trying to look at past attorney general opinions. And it is extremely, extremely difficult to keep looking back and looking back because they're, like Dr. Perry said, goes back to 1944. So the answers to some of these questions are not in anybody's fingertips. So there is lies to some of the time constraints. And as it was alluded to in the budget timeline, we have to follow the union contracts on how our staff receives information and when they receive information and how they receive information.
Can I say something? For what I'm on, whoever you're looking for in the community, I am a former teacher. I taught in this district for 31 years myself and many of the others because I can help make this place as well as the public and everything everybody else needs, one fine student statement, so we sincerely believe this. But it's a tough job being on the school board, a lot of tough decisions to make. I'll also make the fact that I'm Catholic is probably our minimum support for the question. I've served on the church council for many years. My kids all went to St. John's for school. I have a lot of the same questions that you brought up and your father comes to brought up. I met with Dr. Perry today, I listened to what she had to say. And I really honestly feel that these cuts that you're talking about are necessary. Could maybe you work around or that is something that we have to do. And prior to talking about the priest yesterday Saturday after mass, I said, we don't want to separate from church and state. And what we do, we have to be separate because we are not multi-religious. And yet on the other hand, we cannot hurt religion. And this is hopefully not anywhere near criminal, religion at all, but it's a timeline that we draw in this country. And separation of church and state is very important, but religion is very important also. And last thing I'm trying to say, Dr. Priest, is that unfortunately, and very unfortunately, it all comes down to money. And not much we can do about that. So what I'm saying is, well, I've seen what I met with Dr. Perry today, the cuts are necessary. Maybe we can talk and work around some things, but I don't know what else we can do.
And I will mention, we are, most schools do need referendum levy. And we have been very fortunate in this community for forever of not having to do that. Because yes, that is more taxes. And if you live inside the actual town of Foley, your taxes have already gone up because of water. And you know, we take very seriously the idea of tax burden. And when we talk about the levy, that would be, that would be like November of this year. There are so many steps and processes and research and we are nowhere near any of that. But that said, if you're thinking, hey, you know what, I don't like these cuts. Maybe, you know, it's, it doesn't hurt people to begin thinking and educating themselves on this, you know, at all. Doesn't mean we have to do something, doesn't mean we don't have to. But there are very well made come a day, we have to do that. And I want people to understand that the board, as this is made, they said very seriously, the idea of adding on to the tax burden of our community is not something we would just see, you know, flip a switch and redo. Not just a lot of work, but we take it very seriously because we feel we are stewards of the community, trust and money.
As the resolution is presented to us, the proville academic support is of course not the only item on here. There are nine items on here, of public and not public, of education. And there have been many, many, many ruling, meetings, discussions, work, digging, a lot of research. And none of this comes to us frivolously, flippantly, or without any thought. Stephanie Rennisky is a board member, she could not be here tonight, but she can ask that I read a formal statement for her. Prior to this resolution, she is a non-molody member too. She does state as board member, it is our fiduciary duty to ensure the district has funds to pay the bills. We are elected by stakeholders to make tough decisions and to do whatever it takes to keep our budget aligned. If there's no further discussion, I'm going to read the resolution and then we will need a motion and a second. So the resolution comes to us stating, the resolution is continuing and reducing educational programs and positions. Whereas the school board in Independenceville District, if you want, entitled the resolution of margin T of 2024, directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions. And whereas said recommendations have been received, reconsidered by the school board, be it resolved by the school board, if Independenceville District, if you want, is responsible, that the following programs and positions be discontinued. Elementary classroom pay five for COEOT, proville academic support, 1.5 FTE. Math, 1.0 FTE. English, language arts, 0.5 FTE. Fayette education health, 0.3 FTE. Spanish, 1.0 FTE. Art, 0.20 FTE. Social studies, 0.25 FTE. And the dean of students, 1.0 FTE. FTE stands for full-time equivalent. I need a motion and a second please.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Seconded by... Motion is made by Patrick to accept the resolution. A second by Wayne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. I want to say I've never hated a motion like that. But sometimes you have to do this.
We're going to be pulling, I've set out our next item on the agenda, which is the 2023-2025 FUE contract. FUE is fully registered, contract, licensed.
I would like to say thanks to those who served on the committee. FUE leads, Mary Bentley and Michelle Lehman, Dan Carlson, Richard Thomas, the district committee, that superintendent Perry, Becky Howard, Nathan Anderson, Kelly Guretsky and myself. Special thanks to our very capable mediator Tiffany Smith. It was a fair settlement, taking into consideration today's complicated economy.
I'd like to, as we review the settlements, again, I just want to echo the tip does, or note card because it was a process, but one thing that I would like to say is that we were able to maintain a very good relationship throughout the whole process between representatives from FUE and from the school district. And we worked, our final meeting was 17 hours and we were here till almost 1:30 in the morning. I can say that's like the longest I've ever been at school before. Maybe when I was in high school or a clock, but not actively having worked. So we both were committed to the process and really followed the heading as well as that. And we're stepful from the district as well as from FUE. And so our two-year total package was 12.08%. And there were salary increases of 5.5 and then insurance increases as well. And then also a floor agreement increase cap of $30,000, $40,000 for the highlights of the contract.
All right, this is a discussion action item. Was there any further discussion on FUE contract?
I'm just going to say I was not involved in the context at all, but I will give you the results here. And I talked to a lot of school districts in the area and we are within that range. Or you would better provide a file. But the bad thing, of course, is the terms just going up every year. And let's go about that, if you have a turn out of your control. But much to be from my seat here, from my idea.
I need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion is made by Nathan, seconded by Sharon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to our 2023-2025 principal contract.
I was on this particular committee along with Ms. Rennisky, one of our principals. And I think it's my second round of negotiations, I think it's probably the quickest negotiations I've ever been part of. And very good conversations all around.
Our two-year settlement was 9.10%. And so again, the salary increase of 5.5 and then insurance increase of 1.1%. And your one year two is 3.1%. There's an increase, and we also increased floor agreement match and increase cap of some of the highlights from the school.
All right, I need a motion and a second.
I'm counting.
Sure.
Years ago, I was considering becoming a principal. That was my main step. I discussed it with my wife and she told me she didn't want to be married to a principal. So I gotta give this guy a lot of credit for the tough job, we talked about it, so I just want to make that comment.
I need a motion and a second to the principal contract.
Motion to approve.
Motion is made by... Motion is made by Patrick, seconded by Wayne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to the 2023-2025 bus terms of the tournament.
I was also part of this meeting. And the thing that really struck me that I actually want to find out is, at one point in the conversation, turned away from contracting, because somehow it sparked some discussion about like, what are the other safety things you can do, like our parking lots and on the roads? And this is the genuine thing, like, this is a contract, so if we're here, we might as well talk about like, hey, we have these ideas. And it really struck me, you know, the bus drivers are the first person from the school the kid sees in the day, they're the last they see at the end of the day. You know, they set the tone for the day in so many ways. And it was the genuine concern and care that came from this team. And I know that this comes from all of our drivers, it really did strike me, and I wanted to comment on it.
I want to say also that I was the only one probably in the board here, as a bus driver. I was on the committee and I told them this was, I experienced as a bus driver to their on the finance group, people who were, it's a lot of great, extremely important to school. And what is their, came through clearly, it's very, very good to go through.
I will need a motion, do you have anything to add?
We did have a total package, it's a little over 90%. It wasn't particularly mine, if I don't mind, I wanted to. But again, it was a pleasure working with the bus drivers, going a lot. And it has been a pleasure working with all of our groups. And we want to, the board, that we do have two other intended agreements as well. And so we continue to work on our other roles.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Ken, seconded by Patrick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And as board chair, I would also like to make a motion, shake the knees all the way around the tables for their time and their perseverance. We have in our board cabinet, meeting events and notices. And our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be on April 8 at 6:00 PM. And we have an opportunity for board member comments. Cheryl, would you like to start?
Sure.
Thank you to our retirees, Joan Brown, for bringing beautiful music in a very special way to us. Susan Sussman, for her speech skills she brings to FIS and FHS students. Ken Hartman, for making our facility shine. I hope the best is yet to come for each and every one of these individuals. Mark your calendars, the prison concert is March 25. Foley Community Connect Expo is Saturday, February 23. The Spring Play, April 5 through the 7. And congratulations to our band, who recently received three superior ratings, the highest possible. I'd like to tell each and every one of you to celebrate the new life of spring, and to all of you a happy Easter.
And you have anything?
I'm sorry, my phone.
Please.
No, no.
Patrick?
I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. This is probably not the most entertaining way to spend your evening, but I appreciate seeing everyone. And I hope you got an idea of just how hard this particular moment for our school is. No one up here is happy about any of those cuts that we talked about tonight. You know, it's, back when we were getting the ESSR funds, those were much more fun times when I got to go to a meeting and it was, hey, let's get some students in, and let's get some various people around the community and talk about, you know, what were some things we could do? You know, that was, that's a much more fun moment, that's a great way to start my, my time on the school board. Here's the other end of it, you know, and the funding situations change. So I can remember as a student, teachers being, you know, having cuts and stuff too. I, you know, and that's, it seems like the end blow of anything. And we weathered it then, we'll weather it now together, and it will get better again. You know, there's, we will pull together and we will, we will get through, and it may not be what it was. Feeling constantly life has changed. But I want to say thank you, and I hope that these, we may, our friends from St. John's are walking away heartened, that we are still looking for ways. The relationship has changed, we are trying to find a thing to change it to rather than. So I hope that's heartened, that this is not the end, this is the beginning of the year.
And I also would like to thank all the other students who issued that. And I would like to have a motion. Second. Motion by Ken, seconded by Sharon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.